For more information about public parking spaces, the validation program, or tickets, call the municipal court at the city of Stillwater at (405) 742-8255, or visit stillwater.org.
This is Kyle Gibbs with the Stillwater Police Department. When parking in a timed parking space around Stillwater, you may notice a chalk mark on your tire. Parking enforcement uses the chalk marks to monitor vehicles. A parking attendant will mark a vehicle and return later to see if the mark is still present. If your parking time is almost up, move your vehicle to another spot. The attendant will notice the mark changed and faded and will not write a citation. If your parking time is almost up, do not attempt to remove the mark. Removing the mark will result in a fine of $549. This has been a public service announcement from the Stillwater Police Department in the city of Stillwater. Hello, I'm Captain Kyle Gibbs from the Stillwater Police Department. I speak to you today on behalf of Chief Ryan McCarron, Fire Chief Tom Bradley, and Public Safety Director Norman McNichol, all Stillwater's safety staff, and myself, to say thank you for those who stepped up during the tragedy on October 24th. You did need to ask what to do. You administered first aid, you comforted the injured, and you transported those in need to the hospital. You showed leadership until the first responders arrived on scene. We know who you are. You're Stillwater Strong. You are compassionate, and you are its pioneering spirit. We may not know your names, we may not recognize you on the street, and we may not know whose lives you save, but we want to say thank you. You may not think you did something heroic, but we know better. Our prayers are with those still affected by this tragedy, and we are grateful for you and all of our first responder partners who assisted our officers that day. Stillwater is a better, stronger place because of all of you. Thank you from the city of Stillwater.
I'm just gonna hang out here and relax.
It's relaxing.
Yeah. Yeah, the trip back to Pennsylvania is always that short.
We went to Pittsburgh last Christmas. It's not easy to get to Pittsburgh from Oklahoma.
Good evening, the Stillwater Plan Commission Meeting of December 15, 2015, is called to order. Item #2, Land Use Signs for Discussion and Possible Action. 2A, Colby Schwartz, Specific Use Permit, EZ-15-2037. Requesting review and approval of specific use permit to develop property addressed at 3098 E6 for multifamily project in the CS Commercial District. Good evening.
Good evening, Patty Evans, Development Services. The property in question is shown in the hatched area here, and it is Zone CS, Commercial Shopping. The applicant wants to construct a multifamily development for seniors, and in order to do so, in the CS zoning district requires a specific use permit. The property fronts onto Sixth Avenue, which is right across there. The surrounding zoning districts is an RTM, that's two-family and multifamily here on the north, CS on the east, Commercial General on the south, and just to the west. And the uses in the area include multifamily. There's recently been multifamily constructed here on the RTM. There's also multifamily in the area over on Brush Creek and at the intersection of Brush Creek and Sixth. Of course, there's commercial, there's single family. All of the yellow up here is single family, and then this area is a mobile home park. And this is the proposed site plan. At the bottom of the page, our slide is Sixth Avenue. It has one entry, entrance off of Sixth, has three multifamily structures. The largest here is a three-story structure with 42 units, and the two over on the west are single-story with six units each. This is an elevation and rendering of the three-story building with this. This is the front entrance on the southeast side of the building that's facing that One Drive into the development, and this is an elevation of the one-story buildings. Staff findings include that the property is zoned appropriately for compliance with the C-3 Plan. A specific use permit is required for multifamily development in the commercial shopping zoning district, and this application will be presented to OFA for tax credit consideration. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No.
No questions, thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak in favor of this particular item? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, members. My name's Colby Schwartz. I actually represent Affordable Equity Partners. We are the equity partner in this project, tax credit syndicator of the project. So, out of respect, obviously while we're here, out of respect to the landowner, because as part of the application to OFA, that you apply in January as part of, when you turn in your application, you don't know if you receive, if you're awarded those credits to actually build a project until May. So versus a rezoning, thanks to Larry who mentioned specific use permit, we felt that would be most appropriate. That way, if it doesn't get funded, then the landowner is not stuck with the zoning, they might not apply. But the company is based out of Columbia, Missouri, with assets here in Oklahoma as well, and like I said, this would be a senior affordable, so it would be income restricted as well as age restricted. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of this item? See no one? Is anyone out there who want to speak against this item? Anyone out there who want to speak against this item? If not, say you want, I'll close the public hearing. Patty?
Okay, the alternatives are to accept staff findings and recommend approval of the specific use permit, or find modification is not appropriate and recommend denial, or to continue or table this item for further information.
Any questions? Any discussion?
Well, I do like the fact that, you know, if the tax credits for some reason don't go through, the landowner's not handcuffed with the reason. So, appreciate you guys bringing it forward as a specific use permit as well.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve this proposed specific use permit as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion passed. Thank you very much. Item, Item 2B. Executive Residential Group LLC, Specific Use Permit, EZ-15-2038. Requesting review and approve specific use permit at property addressed 508 South Garrett Street to allow commercial single-family use in RTM, single, two-family, and multifamily district. Good evening.
Good evening, Tom Koots. All right, I'm ready. As you said, this is a request for basically a single-family use in the RTM residential two-family and multifamily district. Property is located on Gray Street, just north of Sixth Avenue, between Sixth and Fourth Avenue. Property is zoned RTM. Property is actually surrounded on all sides by the RTM district as well. The property has a single-family house on it currently. The applicant would like to demolish that single-family house and build a new single-family house on the property. Property is surrounded by mostly single-family and two-family uses. Just across the street, there are some new duplexes, and so basically the area is kind of, what's there is being torn down and replaced with, anyway, not so many much apartments despite it being zoned for apartments, let's put it that way. As I said, the request is build a six-bedroom, single-family house to replace the existing house. Site plan has enough space for seven cars, although only six, space for six cars is required, meets all other zoning requirements. Maximum height in this district is 35 feet, and I believe they're calling for basically a two-story with a partial habitable attic on it. Findings include that a specific use permit is required to permit conventional single-family use in the RTM residential two-family and multifamily district. The proposed single-family house would have six bedrooms, enough space to park seven vehicles. Because comments came out in previous cases about the on-street parking, I went and put a finding on there that this particular request would not affect the on-street parking because right now there is no parking allowed on Gray Street. Before, similar requests of this nature have been approved in the neighborhood. There have been two on Pine Street, which is one street over, and those were actually by this applicant, and so basically they're for the same type of project, so to give you an idea of what they're wanting to do here. So, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you, let me off the public hearing. Is there anybody out there who'd like to speak in favor of this particular item? State your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Taylor Sokolowski, and I live in Tulsa, 1528 East 37th Street. I don't have anything to say unless you guys have questions.
You're in favor of this?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No.
No questions, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this? See no one? Any opposition? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition of this item? See no one? Let's close the public hearing.
I should say I did not receive any comments either from the public. Alternatives include, we can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented. We can find that the specific use permit is not an appropriate use for the property based on impacts of the surrounding vicinity, and to not recommend that the City Council approve the request. We can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date.
Discussion or motion?
I just had one minor question in terms of single-family versus multifamily. That doesn't actually, does that denote that there will be only members of a single-family and a single-family versus a multifamily having multifamilies?
Basically, what single-family would be is a dwelling unit. That's one dwelling unit, so it'd have a space for cooking, space for sanitation, and bedroom space, just one, as opposed to a duplex which has two separate sets of that, and multifamily which has multiple sets of that. So, within that dwelling, since the city doesn't have a maximum for unrelated people other than the Westwood district, it would not necessarily be all related people.
It could be, each bedroom could be rented out to a separate person, would be legal under this permit. If it's approved.
There is a way to do that. We do have things, there's a line where a boarding house comes into play. This particular, we've, I've talked to this particular applicant before on their previous requests, they lease out the entire structure to individuals who all are on the same lease, so it's not like they're leasing out one bedroom to one person, one bedroom to another person, and so on, so that's kind of the distinction between the two.
Does that answer your question?
So, if the whole area is zoned multifamily, I'm guessing the single-family now is legally non-conforming? Is that right?
Yes, the existing single-family house would be illegal, non-conforming use, and so it is when they tear it down that legal, non-conforming, it would go away, whereas if it burnt down, then they could rebuild it right back, but since they're tearing it down, they need a special permission to rebuild.
Any other questions?
That's a good question.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed specific use permit.
Does anyone have a second?
Second.
The motion passes. Let's go to Item 2C. Executive Residential Group LLC, Specific Use Permit, EZ-15-2039. Requesting a review and approval of specific use permit at property addressed 521 South Pine Street to allow conventional single-family use in an RTM, two-family, and multifamily district.
Once again, Tom Koots, Development Services. I'm gonna go through this one a bit quicker than the last one. It's essentially the same type of request, it's one block over. The previous request is where my mouse is kind of hovering right now off of Gray. This is kind of catty corner off Pine Street. Request to do pretty much the same thing, and so it also is zoned RTM, surrounded by the RTM district. Also is a single-family house that they would like to demolish and replace with a six-bedroom, single-family house. This property is a little larger, so they have enough space that if they wanted to, they could park nine cars. Only six spaces is required. So, the staff findings is basically the same. Specific use permit is required for this type of use. They're requesting to do a six-bedroom house, and this time up to nine parking spaces. The on-street parking that's on that street is on the opposite side of the street, so this would not have any effect to the parking that's in the neighborhood, and that similar requests have been approved in the neighborhood. Another good example is the previous request. So, any questions for me? I went through pretty fast.
Any questions? Open up the public hearing. Is anybody here who wants to speak in favor of this particular item? See none? Is anybody here who wants to speak against this particular item? See none? I'll close the public hearing.
Tom Koots again. So, we have some alternatives. We can accept the findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented. We can find that the specific use permit is not an appropriate use for the property based on impacts of the surrounding vicinity, and not recommend that the City Council approve the request. We can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation, and table the request to a certain date. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed specific use permit as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been approved. Let's go to the next item. Discussion and possible action approval of regular meeting summary of December 1, 2015.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been approved. The next Plan Commission meeting is scheduled for January 5, 2016. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Rick is seconded. All of them. We stand adjourned, thank you very much.
Yeah, I feel like in that neighborhood, especially like, it's kind of close to the Westwood though, so like.
Hello, I'm Captain Kyle Gibbs from the Stillwater Police Department. I speak to you today on behalf of Chief Ryan McCarron, Fire Chief Tom Bradley, and Public Safety Director Norman McNichol, all Stillwater's safety staff, and myself, to say thank you for those who stepped up during the tragedy on October 24th. You did need to ask what to do. You administered first aid, you comforted the injured, and you transported those in need to the hospital. You showed leadership until the first responders arrived on scene. We know who you are. You're Stillwater Strong. You are compassionate, and you are its pioneering spirit. We may not know your names, we may not recognize you on the street, and we may not know whose lives you save, but we want to say thank you. You may not think you did something heroic, but we know better. Our prayers are with those still affected by this tragedy, and we are grateful for you and all of our first responder partners who assisted our officers that day. Stillwater is a better...